Welcome, everybody. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Almanza?
Present.
Erdnberger?
Present.
Paul.
Holman?
Present.
Frackey. Magnuson?
Present.
Smith. Snipes?
Present.
Elin?
Present.
Six present.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public comment and recognition, we do in fact have one person who has requested to address the board, and I'm going to ask him to please, when he comes, spell his name and give his address, Mr. Melcher. I'm not sure where he stands.
Over there.
Over there? Okay. No, I know where he is. I didn't know where he was supposed to go.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me all right? My name is Timothy C. Melcher, T-I-M-O-T-H-Y. C as in Clifford, M as in Mike, E-L-C-H-E-R. My address is 1308 Jackson Street here in Omaha. I'm here tonight to try to make another pitch again for inducting Dr. Matthew Oliver Ricketts into the Nebraska Hall of Fame. He is a very prominent black member of Omaha dating back to the late 1800s. So he was born to enslaved parents in Kentucky, got a law degree in Missouri, moved to Omaha, and was UNMC's first black graduate and Nebraska's first black doctor. He was also elected to the legislature from 1894 to 1898, I think, but he was Nebraska's first black senator. I feel like he would be a really good person for this community to learn about, and I've looked a little bit more into it. The Nebraska Hall of Fame only accepts nominations once every five years, and this nomination cycle is from now until December 2026, so that takes this year. But I thought this would be a neat project for maybe OPS to somehow get involved with. I could compile some sort of reading material to kind of brief the students on who the current members of the Nebraska Hall of Fame are and use it as an educational tool and could also double as part of the reading goal that you have set through moonshots. I also thought it would be a great way to get support to have the nomination pass through the Nebraska Hall of Fame Committee. I was thinking maybe about having the students get involved by writing letters to the Nebraska Hall of Fame Committee saying, yes, we're on board with having Dr. Matthew Oliver Ricketts inducted because he's awesome. Here's why. So that's all I have. My information should be on the sheet that I filled out, so if anybody has any questions, they can contact me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your advocacy. Now we'll go on to new and miscellaneous business information item, a coherent path forward reviewing the draft strategic plan. The purpose of this workshop is to review the draft 2025-2030 strategic plan and understand how its major components, our current state, our system-wide strategy, and our measures of progress fit together as a coherent whole. We've built in several points during the presentation for board discussion. We ask that you hold questions until we get to those moments, and when we pause, Dr. Chisholm will help guide the conversation. Just raise your hand, and she'll make sure to call on you. To keep us on track, she may need to move us forward at certain points, and that's just to ensure we can cover everything we planned for tonight. If there are questions we don't get to during these times, staff can follow up afterward as needed. Our speakers tonight will be Dr. Chisholm, Ms. Suzanne Kramer, Deanna Moise, Monica Green, John Crowe, and Casey Hughes. That's it. Take it away. Thank you.
Well, first, thank you, everybody, for being here. Oh, sorry. Script is so important. A little bit, there is a slide about our journey together on this, but we actually, August 21st, 2023, so almost three years ago, we started talking about actually cognia. And there was a slide in that, and I remember this discussion very well. There was a slide, and I think it was the first slide, and it talked, and you've seen this slide many times in our presentations, as we went through these workshops together, and it was a slide about key levers of alignment and improvement, and it said, "A key lever of systems improvement is radical alignment, which depends on aligning everyone's behavior and decision-making to a collectively owned vision and strategy." And that's what this is about. This is a draft. This is a draft. A draft. And when Suzanne Kramer presented this draft, the August 21st, 2023 presentation, I remember it very well, the word radical, and it scared me a little bit, and I was worried about using the word radical as the interim superintendent and the first presentation in August as my interim superintendent, I was concerned about the term radical. And in fact, I think we took it out of one presentation because I was kind of wimpy about the term radical. But I don't even know if radical is strong enough. And as we work through this, if radical is even a strong enough term of what we're running into and some of the things that we need to do in the school district to get us to the moon, and I'm a little embarrassed that I was nervous about the term radical. And I think what you'll see today is that movement towards alignment, and in some cases, maybe not radical enough, but we're getting there. And again, this is a draft, and a lot of this shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, but you'll see it all come together. You'll see the alignment, and if you think we need to be more radical, or if you have a better term to get us there, please let us know. But with that, I'll turn it over to the team.
Good evening. President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, Superintendent Ray. As you see, we are diving into our draft strategic plan for 2025 through 2030. Focused on our moonshot goal, all students will read on grade level by 2030. This draft is really about building a coherent system where it doesn't matter what school a child attends, but no matter what school they attend in the Omaha Public Schools, they will have a learning experience where they will read on grade level and beyond. Our goal for this workshop is focused. We want to really look at the plan, look at the ideas in the plan, the logic, the coherence. This is our opportunity to continue working together and reflecting on how this plan fits together as one system. Joining me this evening are several colleagues who have been deeply embedded in this work, and they'll have an opportunity to share with you the components of the plan that they have had a hand in. And I must say, not only these colleagues have been involved in this work, but they are here tonight representing. So our purpose of the workshop tonight is threefold. We really want to work together to understand this plan as a coherent story, reflect on the thinking behind each chapter, and then provide an opportunity to provide feedback on whether this plan really communicates that thinking and that logic clearly before we move forward. Your insights will help us strengthen the plan before we move forward. This is the slide that Mr. Ray referenced earlier. All of this work that we have done together through our board engagement has brought us to this moment tonight. We started this work back in 2023. You'll recognize many of these engagements that we've done along the way. Not only will you recognize them on the screen, you will recognize them in this plan as well. Here, many of those things have come back into play to help shape the ideas in this draft plan. The strategies we're focusing on come directly from what was introduced, and all of these different sections, sessions pulled together into one clear coherent approach. It's pretty impressive. So looking back at that journey, it's clear that every workshop and discussion helped draft the plan. Again, we've taken what works and pulled it together into one approach. So here's how we're structuring our work tonight. This also mirrors how the draft is constructed that you've had an opportunity to look at, and we'll go through a little bit more deeper tonight. So as we move through the plan, we'll do it in three chapters, what we're calling chapters. Chapter one, why we need to act. Chapter two, our strategy, what we're going to do. And chapter three, how we'll know it's working, our measurement plan. So each chapter mirrors the logic of the plan that you got received over the weekend, and after each of those chapters, we'll stop and have some opportunity for reflection and discussion. This really is about making sure that the plan feels clear, coherent, and aligned with our vision of all students reading on grade level by 2030. And just to reiterate what Mr. Ray said, this is a draft. This is a draft. This is a draft. So thinking of this as a story, why change is needed, what we're doing about it, how we'll measure success, that's the roadmap we'll follow tonight. These are the ingredients that we've mixed into this plan. You'll see these sort of as through lines throughout. We started with our mission, vision, and values as the foundation, then we added an input from our stakeholders, students, families, community partners, other voices. We looked closely at our current state of our system. We looked at our student outcomes. Then we layered improvement practices from high performing schools, high performing systems, and applied improvement science along with embedded change management concepts to make sure the first iteration of this draft is not only practical but also sustainable. You will see these elements woven throughout each section of the draft, they give it coherence and ensure that what we're doing reflects both research and the voices in our community. Before we go any further, I'd like to just orient you to the items in your folder, because we will use some of them throughout the workshop. So on the right side of your folder, you have your, another copy of the draft narrative. This is identical to what you received over the weekend. You also have a copy of the slide deck. And then on the left side, you have some sticker dots. You should be excited because we're going to use those later. Behind that, you have this core values note catcher. So you can pull that out if you like because we'll use that throughout. So basically, as we go through each section, we just kind of want you to listen to where you see, or listen to where you hear, or where you see our core values in the plan and make a little note there. So if you hear or see it in chapter one, you can make a little note there. You can make a checkmark. You can write the evidence that you see, however you want to do that, because we'll come back to this at the end. And it has something to do with the sticker dots. And then the last thing on the left side is just for your reference. Those are the cognia performance standards. We won't pull that out and look at it tonight, but it's there for your reference. So let's get started with our pride and joy, our students. This is Aleah. Aleah started kindergarten this year at Edison Elementary School. This is her on her first day of kindergarten at Edison. Aleah loves school, dramatic play, but most of all, she loves to read. Her passion for caring for others truly shines through the scenario she creates during imaginative. She enjoys being challenged with new vocabulary and is always eager to learn more. With her nurturing spirit and love of learning, Aleah dreams of becoming either a teacher or a nurse one day. By 2030, Aleah will be a sixth grader at one of our middle schools who already reads on grade level or beyond. She will hold on to her love of learning and walk into classrooms that are joyful and where literacy is taught through our adopted reading and writing curriculum centered on evidence-based reading practice. Her teachers will regularly engage in professional learning communities that use student work on a regular cadence to make instructional decisions. Her principal will lead a team that monitors attendance, climate, instructional conditions. Her family will partner with the school because the school has clear literacy and attendance goals for each and every one of their students. And the district will monitor the foundational conditions, implementation quality, and student growth on clear predictable measures. This is the system we're building. This is the system we're building for Aleah. This is the system we're building for all of our students. One coherent district where a child's education does not depend on what school they happen to attend. Today, we're sharing the architecture of that system, and tonight, we are asking, does our draft strategic plan tell the right story for Aleah? Tell the right story for all of our children? With Aleah in mind, we'll begin with chapter one of our story, why we need to act, and I will turn it over to Ms. Deanna Moise. Oh, I'm sorry. I will turn it over to Dr. Monica Green, who also is expecting a grandchild at any moment.
Good evening. I'm Monica Green, and I serve as the district's Director of Diversity at Queen and Inclusion. And over the past year and a half, John Crowe and I have been leading efforts to incorporate empathy interviews as a part of our strategic plan and school improvement efforts, and it has been quite the journey. We've talked about tonight's purpose of our workshop and how it fits into the plan together as one story. Our first chapter will answer another critical question, why do we need to act now? Before we dive into strategies or measures, we need to understand the reality that brought us here, the current state of student outcomes, and what we've learned from listening to students, families, and staff. This chapter now will set the foundation for everything that follows. So this slide is about sort of resetting. As we launched our moonshot, we needed to name the problem that we're all trying to solve. You may or may not remember, our initial problem statement was that in 2022, 23, the highest grade proficiency was at the third grade, was a 42%. Our highest performing school was 74%, and our lowest was 11%. So we've updated the problem statement with this year's data, on which you'll receive a presentation on the 15th. You'll see the gap between the lowest and highest school remains the same, though higher overall. And 42% remains our highest level of proficiency. This quantitative understanding illustrates that we are not maintaining proficiency year over year. Our growing students evenly as they move forward. Data is exceptionally important to our moonshot, but it doesn't tell the whole story. We've been engaging in empathy interviews over the past year and a half, and will continue to do so as part of our improvement process. These interviews or listening sessions provide a disciplined tool capture to capture the lived experiences and voices of our students, staff, and family. Tonight, we'll highlight just a few realities that have shaped this plan. Over the last year and a half, we've listened to over 1,000 people across Omaha Public Schools. This slide, which was shared with you in a previous workshop, has been updated to include the most recent opportunities, like the town halls. Done. Take a second to just look at this slide. This depicts just a sample of our school district. I know you've had an opportunity to look at this all over the weekend, but it kind of shocked us as well because when you're deep into the interviews, you don't even really realize how many participants that you've actually engaged. So the last couple of weeks, John Crowe and I took the opportunity to go back through all of the data, which was very interesting, and these are the three quotes that you'll see on the slide. "The representative of a perspective that should inform our change and our moonshot." What you see here illustrates the unevenness of experience that folks have references across stakeholder groups, low expectations that manifest in disengagement and lower results, and the concern and care that we all have for student well-being. Tonight, the draft plan that we present attempts to address what we've learned throughout. Student belonging and connectedness, parents' partners and conditions in schools, often referenced by teachers, all play prominent roles in our draft. Finally, empathy interviews as an improvement tool continues to grow into the fabric of our district. From guiding planning, from guiding planning to understanding how students and staff are experiencing change, or this work has been baked into our draft strategic plan and will continue to grow in presence from now until 2030. And this, I know you've read. "We ask students and families about their experience with learning, reading, and why students do or do not attend school. Here, we're sharing how adults' actions deeply impact students. Community partners like Canopy South, 75 North, Collective for Youth, and so many others play a role in family connection to schools, services beyond the school day, and strengthening safe neighborhoods. Increasing feelings of belonging, connectedness, and safety play a large role in our strategy," which we'll explore more in chapter.
Okay, now is our opportunity to reflect on the information that Dr. Green shared, as well as the information that was provided in chapter one and the narrative. So we have sort of a conceptual question here for number one, and number two is a little bit more specific to the draft. So for our first question, does this chapter accurately describe why literacy improvement? As an Erdnberger.
I have to admit that there's only one slide with data on it, and while it shows a crazy, you know, high to low, it's not really clear about the system-wide nature of it because for all we know, looking at this, we could have one school that's at this level and all the rest are at that one. So one of the things I was thinking of when I was looking at it was whether there was some way to, I was going to say, list all of the schools, not by name, but just by numbers, one through whatever, so that it's a little more, to me anyway, so it's a little bit more clear that, oh my gosh, more than half of our schools are at this level or that level. So something that was a little bit more system-wide in information, I think, would help generate, you know, create the motivation for, oh, yes, we need to fix it across the board. So that was just one of the things I thought.
We appreciate that. I think that definitely is something we can include. We did talk about that with the presentation coming up on the 15th. With all that information, we didn't include it this time, but we will definitely look at how we can.
Yes, I was sort of anticipating that what we're talking about today is not just how the district is going to be seeing what its strategic plan is, but how the community is, and how we can inform the community about why we need to act, and then the other steps, which I'm excited about doing. But again, that was my thought about making the data more system-wide.
When we did our listening, we did it by group. So we had students from multiple schools, or we had security from multiple schools. So by roll group, we would be able to share the percentage of responses that connect to that topic. to that topic that led to this sort of synthesis that you're seeing. Would that address your question? Because we didn't, it's not by school, by school, by school, it's by group. There were parents from every single school at DCAC, if that makes sense. So is it the percentages and how we got to the synthesis more that you're looking for?
Well, to be honest, I guess I sort of feel like it is the reading results that are the most powerful pieces of information.
Quantitative.
That's how I feel about it. I'm just throwing it out there for consideration. And the information you have about who you talked to, you don't identify how system-wide those people were either. I mean, I recognize you talked to like eight different categories, but for all I know, they were all from Central High School, you know, which is obviously not the case. But if we want to make sure that we can convince everybody, including our staff, that this is a system-wide issue, then I think, to a certain extent, identifying that all the people you talked to represented a system-wide feedback, but also what we're going to be looking at is how is literacy being improved? And therefore, I guess, we need to, it would be too easy, I'm afraid, for teachers at some school or parents at some schools, go, this doesn't apply to my school. And I want to avoid that as much as possible.
And I have a picture of what you're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess Jane kind of triggered something in my mind as we talk about what community might want to say. She's looking. And I think that, I think the plan is like super strong for early literacy, right? I think people may want to see like proof of transformation for like middle and high school students and what that looks like for them. I know we talk a lot about on level by third grade, but I think that some people may want to know, well, what about my kid who's past third grade, in middle school now, in high school now? So, and not to say, again, that you're not thinking about that, but just want to see that, because I know you think about it, but kind of made me think about that.
Thank you. I really like this story. I think people are able to connect to stories, so I really appreciate that side. When I think of why, I also maybe think it would be influential to include the benefits. Why do we want to do this? So that she can have better outcomes in testing, so that she can have a better social life, you know, or something related to, to that spectrum where people can be like, oh, yeah, I want my kid to also have a better after-school experience or be more outgoing, whatever the research says.
President Erdnberger?
I was just going to follow up on that point, which is, people look at the scores in the paper, and they list math, science, and reading, and something that identifies why we've picked reading. Now, I happen to be 110% behind that. I understand how reading plays into the others, but something in here that identifies why is reading the thing we chose, and what is it going to accomplish?
I think I'll want to revisit that idea again when we get to one of the other questions, but I will also say that when I looked at this question, I had some of the same reaction that you did, and I went back to that particular slide with the four or three data points that we have. And as I thought about it more, I realized that it, in fact, does show the reason, part of the reason, one of the reasons that we have to look at all of our schools. If our proficiency at the highest was 81%, it means that we still have work to do at all of our schools. And I think making that explicit is the gap that I missed, right? Is make it, I had to go look for that connection. I didn't, it didn't, it wasn't obvious to me just from reading it. So I think saying that, right, is that, I think from this, from our assessment, from our Cognia assessment, we found that it's not just school by school, it is classroom by classroom, that that showed that there is work to do in all of our schools.
Yes.
And even if it's not by classrooms, if it's, if there's any other category, maybe, if it's by, I don't know, demographics, something related to demographics. But yeah, I was doing the math on that slide, the one that was previously up there, and and so the, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would be looking at between increasing the scores between 58% and 73%, is that correct? Including that would be, so that people don't have to do the math would be, okay? Would be a nice, helpful thing.
I feel like we've kind of talked about both of these questions, but I wanted to see if anyone else has anything else they'd like to add. All right, we'll move on to chapter two. We'll really turn it over this time to Mrs. Deanna Moise.
As Dr. Chisholm said, I'm Deanna Moise. I am the executive director of secondary education. And last year, I had the privilege of supporting our moonshot by leading a work group during our monthly meetings, and was also a part of the planning of our whole group sessions, and served as a lead during the spring as we utilized the feedback from all of our sessions to develop our tactical plans. As we move into chapter two, we shift from why we need to act to what is required to move our district forward. This chapter focuses on the levers for improvement, our students' experiences, our instructional systems, and the supports needed to ensure every student is on a strong path. Our moonshot is clear, Aleah and every other OPS student will read on grade level by 2030. Many urban school districts publish long lists of initiatives in their strategic plans. While those lists can look impressive, they often lack coherence and don't drive system-wide improvement or include elements of change management or improvement science. Our approach is different. We're united around one focus, growth and literacy, and we are building a coherent strategy, not a collection of disconnected initiatives. This strategy is grounded in stakeholder feedback, current outcomes, and proven practices from effective schools and systems. As we go through our strategy, think about what feels critical and what might be missing from this draft. We started by taking a close look at where we are today, listening to students and families through interviews, reviewing student performance data, and gathering input from work groups and community surveys. Then, we added proven practices from successful schools guided by insights from our Cognia Systems Accreditation. These practices are organized into four big areas that define what strong schools look like. Cognia's 31 standards are research-based and designed with clear goals in mind. They outline what excellence looks like and serve as a roadmap for improving schools and systems. You have a handout in your folder that explains each of these standards. We can take a minute to review it before we move on to our theory of action. So if you want to pull that document out, we'll just give you about two minutes just to see how that is laid out and how those standards are categorized into those key characteristics. So those two key resources, our local voices and the proven strategies, are what shaped and strengthened our plan. Now that you've had a chance to review the Cognia standards, we will see how our current state plus evidence-based practices equate to our theory of action. Our theory of action is simple but powerful. We need to focus on people, time, and resources where they're needed most, use proven reading practices for every child, build a culture rooted in our core values, and stop doing things that don't directly impact student learning. When we do these four things, every staff member and family will know their role, and every student will read on grade level by 2030. So where do we propose to focus our action to improve literacy? We know that we'll need to improve conditions in schools so that staff can do their best work. Everyone will need to know their role while being participants in a defined improvement process. We'll have to stop doing what's not aligned to literacy and double down on important aspects like early childhood, student belonging, and connectedness. We'll work on an aligned and robust network of volunteers and partners to support our schools with literacy, and of course, we must improve academic outcomes by raising the expectation and ensuring consistency in every classroom, every day. To make our theory of action real for Aleah and every OPS student, these elements must be in place. They reflect what our community told us matters most and what research shows is necessary for sustained literacy improvement. Together, they create the environment where high-quality instruction and continuous improvement can take hold and where our moonshot can be achieved.
Okay, so now we want to just give you an opportunity to open your draft plan to section 2.3, which is on page 12. We just want to give you some time to review these sections that kind of go through each one of those elements, and make some notes on what you think is critical, where you think you might see some gaps, where there needs to be more clarity or specificity. So this is just an opportunity to really look at some of these strategies that have been outlined in here, and to really dig into those and be able to provide feedback. So we're just going to give you a couple minutes to be able to review, skim those, and then we'll have a discussion. About 30 more seconds. If you look through those sections, 2.3 through 2.10, what did you feel were the most critical elements to achieving our moonshot?
Did I say it all over again? Oh, of course. No, I'm sorry. I totally forgot. I mentioned 2.3, 2.4, and 2.9. And then I said that different parts of each one truly go hand-in-hand with one another, and some parts of them you can't have without having parts of the others. Yeah, so those are my most critical ones.
I agree with Dr. Holman, 2.3. And I would also say the 2.1, I think knowing where you're at kind of helps you build that baseline, which is pretty important. The 2.4 for sure. I think within 2.6, especially that empowering families as first teachers, I think that's really powerful, and would be very valuable in terms of just impact. It's kind of hard to say something isn't critical, to be honest. Even the volunteers and partnerships, when I just think about capacity as well, I think that's very important. And definitely the 2.9.
I think this is a good and fairly tight, comprehensive list, so I don't want to really put other emphasis on any particular one, but I do, I think Dr. Holman and Ms. Snipes' points are very well-made, but I guess I would also especially not want to discount 2.7. That internal motivation of a student to want to come to school and learn can take us a long way.
In 2.7, I also put one next to, I was putting Cs by stuff, ensuring sustainability. I thought that was.
What about gaps? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was thinking again in terms of using how this instrument is going to be seen by all of the people that you're ever going to show it to. I would have found it helpful on the slide where, I think it's before this one, if after each one of them you listed what section of the strategic plan, because that's what it is. I mean, one is, the first one up there is 2.3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10. So I feel like it's an easy way to know where to look to find out what we're talking about. So that's just, you know, that's just a presentation comment. I had a horrible time coming up with how to order them, although when I looked at 2.3 and the elements that are listed in 2.3, they almost subsume everything else that's in there. So, you know, if you had to pick one, I guess 2.3 is it. I don't know if this is out of order for you, but I have to admit, I did not understand where your Cognia standards and theory of action connected with this. I don't know where they came up. I mean, it's a great list. I love it. But I don't see why we took the little Cognia detour that we did. So if there is a reason, I would like it to be clarified. And if there isn't, then let's not do it.
So the intention is that the Cognia standards fit in terms of, first of all, the improvement science. So the way of getting better, school districts having that methodology, that way of getting better, there's a fit there. And then later on, in the implementation metrics, how well are we implementing our vision? That's where they live, particularly the ones that we got it to on that were really inconsistent across our district where we didn't have the instructional leadership or the teams weren't using protocols or we weren't looking at data or, you know, any number of things that we saw inconsistencies in. Those are coming out in those improvement processes. And the Elliott, the 4-3-2-1 student engagement, so it lives in the implementation measurement of what's going on in our schools and classrooms.
Again, I guess just because I like to have things go in A, B, C, D, 1, 2, 3, you know, that sort of thing. To the extent that each of these Cognia standards relates to one of our 3 through 10s, 2.3 through 2.10, maybe, again, I just feel like it's a leap from here to there. Or save the Cognia for the implementation part. Again, I don't know, you guys have given so much more thought to this than I ever will. So whatever makes sense to you. But I'm not seeing the Cognia connection with this list, I guess somehow.
Go back to Slide, yeah, my copies don't have numbers on it. Could you go back to Slide 16? I think it is 16. There. Is this the one that you're thrown by? Is this the one that's throwing you?
Sorry. The current state doesn't really describe what our current state is. It's describing how we know what our current state is, right? Because you've worked with those seven different categories of people. And then, what I, I feel like what we're really focusing on is the evidence-based practices. I love knowing that Cognia says it's these things. And then we go to a list of seven practices or however you want, areas of action. And I don't see how those areas of action connect to those four. I think it'd be pretty easy to do, but I just don't see it. Does that make sense?
But we could be more clear about the, or explicit.
Right, because cultural learning is probably, you know, if you look at some of these, we'll define everyone's role. That's probably in one of those four things. So each of these things is covered by those four things. It just seemed like I was getting lots of lists, each of which was a great list, but I couldn't see how they related to each other. Sorry. Is that what you're asking for today?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense and thank you. You know, when you're so into it, it makes sense in your mind.
I agree. I'm a visual, so maybe even having a slide making those connections for the viewers or the readers. I asked like 2.3, but when looking and reviewing the other section, I feel like maybe there's some missing. For example, in family and community partnerships, it does mention the family parts, but then I don't see anything about community partnerships. So I feel like this one is a great summary, but then I go over to another section and that's, it does include like, you know, a summary of the community partnerships. That, and I also want to mention, I like the stakeholder groups that were mentioned, the family, the students, the teachers. Maybe also mentioning the for-profit or private businesses. I know some students are very persuaded by the free pizza or the bucket thing. So maybe working with the wider community or how we can engage the wider community, not just, or nonprofit organizations or partnerships that we already have.
Thank you, Ms. Snipes.
Thank you. Speaking of community partnerships, I just wanted to mention I really appreciate the inclusion of 2.8. I think especially the building a district-wide literacy volunteer corps. Think that, I've heard comments randomly throughout my tenure of a whole year about how people would love to volunteer in coordination with our moonshot to help kids strengthen reading goals and things like that. So I think that's a fairly untapped well of talent that we can utilize in our community. So I think this is a really great idea.
Any gaps or additional gaps, areas where you feel like there needs to be more clarity, specificity that you can share?
All right, I remember this time. 2.10, Stop Doing to Support Focus and Coherence. I totally understand what it means. I guess the question that I have are maybe some clarity. When it says that the district will be responsible for this, who exactly would the district be? Is that just top-down, like from our executive directors down? Or is this also a responsibility of principals within the actual buildings? Or a conglomerative of both from district down to the building?
I think part of our, yes. I think part of our work with Stop Doing is supporting that, supporting others in being able to identify what those things are. So last year, when we had our moonshot work groups, we worked on as part of that team to identify things. But then how do we get to the point where every staff member, every leader, as they're doing their work, that is the mindset that they have? If we're going to do this, what can we stop doing as part of their thinking?
And I think that's one of the things, too, you just mentioned it. I know a lot of times, just, I think naturally as educators, we say that we're going to stop doing something, but we immediately fill that space with something else. And so, yes, we're stopping something, but then we're adding to it. And so the cycle is just continuous. And I don't know if we ever actually meet the goal of stopping, if that makes sense.
Dr. Chisholm, I think if you just let people know that you've got a special folder on your computer called Suggestion Box. I don't think you'll have any trouble getting lots of feedback.
Oh, yeah.
It's actually a paper folder.
You've got a whole file drawer. Others? Mr. Teelen?
Thank you. So in the, we're calling the foundational, now I've lost the foundational conditions, is that it? One thing that I think struck me that's missing, but I think for very good reason, we just, I think, just think it's worth pulling back and giving some context, either prior to this or in some kind of narrative explanation of our strategic plan, is it kind of assumes that we've got the curriculum and instructional tools already in place and available. And I think we've done a lot of that work, right? So I think it's just pointing out that work that has already been done. I think one area of that that I think we're working on right now, but also that maybe isn't completely done and might bear specifically mentioning is technology, the effectiveness of our, like the technology tools that we're using and evaluating and deciding whether those are the tools that we want to continue using or whether it's worth us continuing to spend that time with those tools.
Before we move on to chapter, to close out, Chapter 2, part of our logic was really around how we move from pockets of excellence to system-wide consistency. Probably heard that as a line throughout this whole workshop. And your feedback along with this starter draft and the things we can add and clarify. Just a real quick mention, and I believe this is on page 18 in your narrative. You don't have to turn to it unless you want to, but this is an idea of how we could implement this work. So really this year, focusing on building coherence, establishing those expectations, moving into next year, strengthening those practices, strengthening our leadership capacity, family partnerships, and then following up in our last few years on pushing the accelerator on our progress, prioritizing some remaining schools that we have yet to get to. And so with that, I will turn it over to Chapter 3, How We Know It's Working, to Mr. Casey Hughes.
Good evening. I'm Casey Hughes. Serve on the research team in school improvement. Over the last year, we've been working to ensure that we're measuring the most important parts of our system as related to literacy improvement. We've shared with you during small group sessions in November, and the measurement portion is presented in Chapter 3 of the narrative that you received. So think back to Aleah. She's in kindergarten today, and we need a way to monitor whether those elements are actually improving her learning experience. As Aleah moves through OPS, we can't wait until 6th grade to find out if the plan worked. We need clear, predictable, and measured, predictable measurements along the way. Measurements that tell us if the system is improving and if Aleah is on track. This next chapter explains the measurement system that will give us this clarity. It's how we ensure accountability and continuous improvement. We'll look at four components: foundational conditions, implementation measurement, progress monitoring, and our summative goal measurement. As we go through this, think about which measures give you, as board members, the clearest picture of progress and where you see gaps. Again, our measurement system has four parts. Foundational conditions, these are the basics in place so that Aleah and her peers can learn. Implementation measurement, are we doing what we said we would do and how is it going? Progress monitoring, are students growing and are we improving along the way? And summative goal measurement, are we meeting our ultimate target? Your feedback during the small group sessions helped refine this system. We'll talk briefly about each element. Again, this draft envisions a measurement system that tells the story of our moonshot. It communicates our progress and it drives continuous improvement. When schools are doing well, we can understand what they've done from an implementation perspective and which conditions are in place at those schools. If a school is struggling, we'll be able to get to the root cause and adjust resources or refine our implementation at that location. As a reminder, these four tiers can be found in Sections 3.2 through 3.5 of the draft plan. Foundational conditions are the building blocks for effective learning environments. We just reviewed these as a part of our strategy and we plan to measure them along the way. As a reminder, these are in Section 3.2 where you can see specific indicators for each condition. Instructional leadership includes leaders with a vision for literacy improvement and stability in their role. Staffing and professional learning includes having classrooms, every classroom staff, and every teacher engaged in professional development. Attendance and climate include reducing chronic absenteeism, behavior incidents, and improving climate survey results each year. Family and community partnerships include shared literacy and attendance goals with students, families, and schools. And collaboration in infrastructure means teachers collaborate regularly and facilities meet standards. Based on the feedback you provided in small group sessions, we've also added special education staffing as a condition. These conditions create the environment where Aleah can thrive and staff can do their best work. For implementation measurements, improvement processes, student engagement, and instructional practices will be tracked using several tools. So these include Cognia standards, the Elliott, and IPG tools. Specifically, we're going to use these schools to measure our progress towards evidence of improvement, effective learning environments that support Aleah's learning and development, instructional leadership that is focused, driven, and coherent, high-performing teams at each school with structured collaboration using PDCA cycles to look at student work and student data, and high expectation and engagement by using high-quality instructional materials that lead to rigorous grade-level tasks and push Aleah to learn each day. Internal and external evaluators use these types of tools for a clear picture of progress. Our plan to measure implementation in our schools and classrooms can be found in Section 3.3 of the draft plan. For progress monitoring, we'll use our interim assessments as early indicators of student progress. Again, we can't wait for a once-a-year annual assessment to determine if Aleah is receiving the supports that she needs to stay on grade level. For instance, in Aleah's case, we could use our AMIRA assessment while she's in grades K through 3 to measure her foundational reading growth across each school year. Then, as she progresses into the upper elementary and middle school grades, we'll look at her MAP ELA scores to make sure she's scoring above the 50th percentile nationally and she's maintaining or accelerating her growth on those assessments. She won't yet be in high school in 2020-30, but for those students who are, we can monitor pre-ACT in grades 9 and 10, and that will allow us to see progress towards ACT proficiency. And finally, our summative goal measurements. These are the summative measures that take place once a year to measure Aleah and other students' reading proficiency. These annual measures also confirm whether the whole system is delivering results. By the time we report these, we should already know where Aleah's trajectory is from her progress monitoring. These include our ELA assessments in grades 3 through 8 and 11 and college career and life readiness indicators at the high school level. Each component, conditions, implementation, progress, and summative measurements work together to create a full picture. The system informs, this system informs Central Office, supports, guides continuous improvement. We appreciate your feedback in the small group sessions, and we plan on hosting annual workshops to provide updates and more detail on implementation measurements, including the Elliott. We've added special education staffing as a foundational condition. And in a moment, Suzanne is going to briefly discuss monitoring how the members of our organization are experiencing the change of our moonshot. We'll use all of these measurements to identify schools with strong conditions, implementation, and momentum, to ensure we can target schools for support that need more intensive improvement, to inform the distribution of our resources across all of our schools, to adjust our systems, our professional development, and support based on evidence, and to ensure alignment between Central Office, school leaders, and the Board of Education. This slide illustrates evidence-based dimensions of change. In order to successfully manage change, there must be a clear vision. People have to have the skills to execute a new way, and resources have to be distributed to support that change. And there must be an actionable plan and a culture and space and time to support collegiality. Absent any one of these, members of our organization might feel frustration, anxiety, or initial resistance. We'll be using regular pulse check surveys and empathy interviews throughout our improvement cycles our improvement cycles to track how individuals and groups are experiencing change and determine where we may need to build capacity or divert our resources in some, so excuse me, in some way. So what does this system provide to you as board members? First, clarity. You'll have a clear picture of whether foundational conditions are in place, whether implementation is strong, and whether students are on track. Second, and penultimately, predictability. Reports will follow a consistent cadence so you can monitor progress over time. Third, alignment. These measures connect directly to your role in setting vision, monitoring progress, and ensuring policy and budget decisions support our moonshot. In short, this system gives you the information you need to govern effectively and hold our district accountable for results. And as a reminder, and in alignment with our values of results and accountability, we'll also continue to provide the Board of Education with timely updates on key metrics, things like attendance, behavior, on-track status, advanced academics, post-secondary readiness, and more. These reports will follow a predictable annual cadence to provide valuable information to inform our work towards our moonshot.
Thank you for giving us a overview of our measurement and evaluation system. As I mentioned, you had an opportunity to look at this in small groups. We took your feedback, incorporated that in, and this provides an opportunity to have a larger group conversation around that measurement plan. So as you think about your role as a board member, which part of this measurement system gives you the clearest picture for monitoring progress? And also, does the measurement and evaluation section of this draft reflect the system we're trying to build clearly? What needs refinement? Where's the Erdnberger?
Those questions.
Where's the Erdnberger?
Yes, I was that student. I apologize. But somebody has to get it started, you know? Okay, again, confused. We have How We Know It's Working, and I apologize, I don't know what slide it was, but it was like one of the first ones. Looks like this. Thank you. Foundational conditions, this is, this is another piece of gab with, where I thought, okay, what happened to that list? Okay, foundational conditions are the things we described in section 2.3. I don't see where 2.4 through 2.10 are being implemented or progress monitored or summative goal. Foundational, unless foundational conditions you're going to tell me includes all of 2.3 through 2.10, again, I'm not sure why we talked about 2.4 through 2.10 because they aren't showing up again in this part of the strategic plan, unless I've missed something. But where are those things that were really important, like partnerships and community engagement and, you know, making sure everybody joins a club? Where is that in this? Sorry.
So a couple of things. The foundational conditions are what we heard from our stakeholders need to be in place and what we learned from our external review from Cognia. These need to be in place in order for schools to do their work. The singular goal of reading on grade level, the sort of ideas, if this is the foundational condition, the water that we're swimming in and we're implementing well, then we're getting to that singular outcome, which is improvement of literacy. And so what you're seeing is our attempt here to say, these are the root causes for why we might not be all reading on grade level, that we learned from teachers, that we're seeing in our data, that we went through this process. And so we're working to address those root causes by getting at these foundational conditions in every school, better implementation in every school, and then some key strategies to drive that forward. We know we have to address parents as first teachers, early childhood, some of those kinds of things. We would be remiss to have a literacy strategic plan without that right in place. The improvement science, seeing evidence of that living in every school, are, is our improvement methodology. Climate surveys, getting at that sense of belonging. We will be able to track participation. That is a piece we need to add explicitly. To your, your point, I think we can add explicit measurement of sense of belonging. Empathy interviews and the climate survey do have items that will address, well, empathy interviews will address that. And then the climate survey has some really specific items around students feeling connected to adults, having that trusted person at school. So that piece, we can flesh out that sense of belonging. How do we measure it here? But that's my first sort of thought reaction to what you've asked. But I'm going to put a note that will go over about the explicitness of how each strategy lives in the measurement plan, if I'm hearing you correctly.
So go to the next slide, and I think maybe, no. Looks like this. That one. Thank you. So those are the five foundational conditions. And I think what you're saying is that, I'm going to say 2.4 through 2.10, each one of those is in one of those categories, like the sense of belonging is part of climate, the partnerships, the community. So again, I'm very linear thinker, which you have all come to know and love about me. But again, we had that really great list of 2.4 through 2.10, and then it kind of disappeared. So I feel like it would be helpful to see that really the foundational conditions are the overarching, and those things relate back to these five conditions so that I can see, oh, that's what happened to all those other great things that we were listing. And then I guess I have to go to the next step forward, which is the implementation and measuring. I don't see the implementa, implementation, I don't see the measuring of community engagement. I mean, I know it's possible. I just, it's not discussed in here. Is this what you wanted to hear?
Yes, that's very helpful.
There, I think. So the implementation measurements that we have with Cognia Elliott and IPG, I think of a little bit as one step, in some ways, one step past an implementation measure. They are leading indicators of whether we're going to get to our goal, right? And they can give us broader ideas about whether the, all of these things are being done well and contributing to progress in a particular school or classroom. I think the, like brass tacks implementation measurements of, have you in fact gotten rid of all multi-grade classrooms? Or have we in fact gotten this? I mean, I think the, the details of the core or of the foundational conditions are a good list of like, how do we measure, when do we know we actually have done those things? And that's not what's impeding our progress, or that that's, or that we know we have to go back and do more work in that area because we haven't gotten there yet. So I think adding that as a, as part of the report of we've, we're this much into getting this across the district helps us understand that those foundational conditions are being implemented, and so we can start to expect some of these leading indicators to move.
So if, for example, in an annual report of some kind, you were able to see that five of nine middle schools have met over half of the conditions?
I think that's a good example of how we might think about it.
Right, yes. So then we would be able to say, and on average, middle schools are implementing at about a three or a two when it comes to improvement processes or student engagement. So that was kind of the thinking, that we could even, we could go and provide at least a leveled look at, this is what we're seeing in terms of conditions in place. And then you could go either way across that sort of theory of action, if you will, where this, these schools are getting better, growing. So then we see they're implementing these things exceptionally well. They have high student engagement, teachers are teaching with very high expectations according to the IPG, and they have these improvement processes in place. And they have these seven of nine conditions, is how we were kind of thinking about it. Okay?
Change, does that start to get?
Is that getting at what you're saying? I just want to make sure I'm understanding. And then if a school is not moving in the right direction, we'd be able to say, oh, we're just not seeing evidence of these improvement practices, or we know that we have work to do from a special education staffing perspective at that school, we've not met those conditions. So we're starting to understand a little bit more also for continuous improvement, why change is happening or why it's not. Yes, that hitting the mark of what you're?
Yeah, and I think, so I think the other, this is entirely my, one of my thoughts as I went through this is, we, I have no idea whether we are implementing with, I can, you can tell me whether it's been put in place or not. I have no way to assess whether it's been put in place with fidelity to model or research-based practices. So I think the other, the piece that allows us to stack on top of that is the standardized, you know, Cognia standards, et cetera, to say, well, yes, you've put it in place, but we're still not seeing the results. That leads us back to fidelity. So I think it, like it comes at it from a different, couple different directions. I just think there's, it does need to be more explicit for us and for everyone who might be looking at it, how these pieces fit together.
Could include that a three means that that process is happening 75% of the time, that a two means it's happening in 50% of PLC, is something like that, so that you have an understanding of that integrity and what that means. We could include that here.
I think it's 33. And we're also, these are also conditions too that you're getting as well. So these are still things that we're getting. I just want to bring it back to this as well. So these are also conditions that will be highlighted.
I know that, thank you. On page 23, it talks about an annual report being done. And to me... Not this slide. Sorry. And so, I'm sorry. So does that mean like the community gets like this official update annually as well? Right, so. And so I guess my question is, I guess my first question would be, when will we expect that report to be coming out? And then, like, let's say we get the report and, like, something is not going right in, like, October. Are we waiting to talk about that, like, publicly? I guess what's the difference between, like, what the board sees, like, throughout the year versus, like, what it might see, like, once a year since they don't come to the school board meetings? Does that make sense?
So, can you go back to the title? The, the yellow one?
Oh.
Three? 33.
Perfect. So our thinking here was, in the MAP report, for example, which would give us some understanding of reading progress, we would give the in-depth understanding of that interim measure like we do every year, but we would call out how that is connected strategically to the moonshot and how schools are leveraging that metric to implement so on and so forth. Then the idea is annually, and I think we were thinking mid-year sometime, January, February, we would have a strategic plan, sort of annual report, that helps you see from the foundational conditions to implementation to progress monitoring and outcomes, how we're doing. So it sort of pulls together the salient pieces that are most relative to our strategic plan, to our moonshot, and tell that story for you in a singular report. And then just keeping in mind that internally, we have just-in-time metrics for these most important things that schools are looking at every day, every week, all the time, from on-track to attendance and so forth. So that's kind of our thinking, is deep dive reports represented here, and then pulling out those, those pieces that we've talked about in the measurement plan to tell that story once a year.
I have to say, I'm really excited about this because it's something we've been sort of dancing around for several years now, is what information does the board want to see, and when is it available to be shown to us, and what information do we want to see that we really don't want to see? We just don't know it. So I feel like this is a really good way of identifying what's relevant and when we'll be able to see it. So we're not going, did we ever see that? Did anybody send, is anybody ever going to tell us this? So we just know. And so in, in some respects, the October information is an annual report because we'll get it every October. But then what you're describing, which in some ways is more, the bite-sized pieces of information are almost more useful to our community. But nonetheless, there will be something that sort of captures all of it at one time if that's how somebody wants to learn things. So no, I'm very excited that we finally have reached this point. Thank you.
So these are, I don't feel like we've been dancing around it. I feel like we've been presenting this information.
I know.
I know what you mean, but.
You know what it's.
I mean, it's part of.
No, it's not that you haven't.
Sorry.
You have been very clear about.
Defensive mode already.
Yes, I can tell. Calmness, calmness. But what, we, we haven't established it as a norm, I think, in our policies, or haven't been doing it enough along, because you're, you know, you're a.
So, and these are all, these are dependent on when we get the data. Research, I just want to put this out to my friends in research too, that these are also research-generated, so they're heavy and a lot of work too. So these dates could fluctuate a little bit based on when they get the data, when they generate the reports as well. So you will see these, you get these as receipt of reports now. So these will be pulled up as presentations, and those callouts specific to the strategic plan. So I thank the research team for being a part of this process and making sure that that's part of the strategic. I turned my defensive.
You're doing a very good job, Superintendent.
My first year.
One other question. Can you go back to the, the change management slide? I really appreciate that that is there. And that we're, the pulse checks surveys are a really great way for us to be checking in on that and seeing where progress is on an individual and group basis, as you mentioned. I'm wondering if there is a, if there is a, if there is something that can be shared with the board on the progress of these in a way that makes sense, I just don't know if it'll make sense or not, but for us to see, I think this is, this is going to be a huge part of whether this is successful or not. So it's, I'm a little, feeling a little bit, well, we've got some great data about implementation metrics and other things. I, I'm a little worried about not being able to have this part of, you know, having some insight into how well this is going. So if there is something that can help us see how, where people are in this, in the change management process, and how much progress we're making at a, at any particular point, I think that, I think that would be an important part of the conversation. I think that, I think that would be an important part of the conversation.
Thank you. Anything else? Appreciate your, all your comments and feedback. So at this point, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Kramer. We've gone through all of our chapters and now we're going to move into, she's going to close us. Don't get excited, we're not done yet. But she, but she's going to lead us through the, all of the closing stuff.
All right. So you all have seen this slide before. And we have, over the last three years, since 2020, 23, been laying the groundwork, shoring up our professional learning system, aligning the goals within our school improvement plans to our strategic objective, celebrating and ensuring we have the right behaviors aligned to our, our values and leadership and improvement practice. And then really honing in, what are those improvement processes that we need to see consistently across our district? And tonight, we want to talk a little bit about adding aligned investment to our understanding of getting those arrows moving in the same direction. So another key part of our strategy is how we're using our resources, which you can see represented in that, in those foundational conditions to some extent. Leaders, people, all of those things are resources. So we want to be clear, this plan is not built on expanding, expanding spending or adding new initiatives. It's built on repurposing and realigning the resources that we have. First, we're repurposing time. Much of this work happens in structures we already have and are, have been working to create space for, from PLCs, our late start improvement days, the ta, the frequency and times and ways in which our leadership teams are operating, but with far more focus and discipline. Second, we're repurposing and ensuring alignment of the role and what people are doing, not adding roles, instead creating clear expectations for principals, for instructional leaders, for teachers, for para-professionals. This is about coherence, not expansion. One example of this I just wanted to share is this year, we've trained all of our instructional para-professionals on a common intervention and are providing ongoing professional learning around how they look at their students' data that's connected to our instructional resources. And so just that sort of role clarity around instructional paras doing this work at this time with common data, that's kind of what we're talking about here from a role clarity perspective. Third, we're realigning fiscal resources. Most early investments, especially the professional learning and coaching, have come from external funders. We're leveraging federal funds in a strategic way. These supports are designed to build internal capacity and then taper off, not create ongoing expenses. So we're really working on developing improvement leaders throughout our system, having high-performing teams, and the ability to sustain our work will come from the capacity of those teams and those people being able to engage in the work of improvement and lead it, no matter the problem that they're trying to solve. Given the district's financial picture, including significant anticipated reductions next year, this strategy is intentionally designed to move forward with the resources we already have. It's about doing the most important work with discipline and alignment, bringing all of our resources to bear on a singular goal and focus. So now it's time for our coherence check, thinking about our values and all that you've heard this evening. We've walked through chapters one, two, and three of this draft, draft, draft plan. Each chapter tells part of a layer's story from kindergarten, from a kindergartner entering one of our schools to a sixth grader reading on or above grade level. But the real power comes when we can see how each piece fits together as a system in alignment with our values. So this means that the logic flows from why we need to act, to what the strategy is, to how we'll know it's working. This section is about stepping back and asking, does it feel like one system? Does it feel like, does it reflect our core values and the foundational elements throughout? As you know, our OPS core values of results, equity, accountability, leadership, and joy are foundational to this plan. We had our last workshop in September. We asked you which core values you wanted to see more prominently across the new strategic plan. Results and accountability were the most prioritized values. Today, we want to see where all of our core values show up across the three chapters we've shared with you tonight. You have your note taker. Take a moment to revisit and add your notes to your note taker. And then you'll have, you'll see some sticker dots in your folder. So I'm going to pause for just a minute, try to be a good teacher here and give you the opportunity to go through your notes one last time, and then we'll move on to the next step. So we'll pause for just a minute. We're looking for where we saw our values represented across the three chapters. Dr. Chisholm has asked me to be very enthusiastic about your opportunity to put stickers on.
I'm an elementary teacher.
So now find the sticker dots in your folder. You're going to have the opportunity to place them on the chart where you see evidence of each value. You don't need to put a dot in every box, only mark where you see evidence of the core value in the draft plan. Because this is an open meeting, we're asking that you refrain from engaging with one another during the activity. We'll open it up for discussion after you've all returned to your seats.
May I ask a question? Are colors, are they?
All right. So now that we have this visual representation of alignment to our values across the three chapters, wanted to give you all the opportunity to discuss which values received the most dots. What is, how does that, what does that tell us about alignment? And then what may be underdeveloped based on this visual of which values received fewer dots? Your input will help us strengthen alignment before we finalize the plan.
So I, joy has the fewest, I think, down there. And I think, especially as we go back to change management, that is one of the areas where we can, the reinforcement of, of good work is an area that we can really leverage to help propel the plan. So I think that that is definitely an area where we can identify it as something where we might not have as much, it's not as prominent. I think we can definitely stop.
I'm, I'm curious for the group, especially for the group that works with me on a daily basis and my history with joy. Chapter two, what the strategy is, several of you put a lot in joy. And I'm one, I'm wondering if you wouldn't mind sharing with me where, where the joy is or why you put the sticker in joy? What triggered you to put a sticker in joy? Because it looks like several of you put twice maybe.
Yeah.
If I'm seeing.
That may have just been a mistake.
Is there a dot between the burbles? I can't tell.
Well, looking at the norms for joy, one of them is we authentically live out our shared owned mission and vision. And I think that that's, that's what we're doing when we embrace a strategy to change. I feel like we have defined joy as we get where we're at and we're going to roll in this together sort of thing. So I guess I saw that as how I begged joy for that one.
I put a sticker in joy because part of the strategy is increasing a sense of belonging and connectedness. I think that inherently, you know, when you build that connection, when you make a student feel like they belong, they inherently want to be there and they enjoy.
I also agree with what Jeanie said. I marked that, but then also I can't remember if this was a one or two, because I marked them both. The section where we had from athletics to, well, I can't remember what it was called, but I think that that also demonstrates a sense of joy.
I think one of the highlights of the leadership one, though, and this gets back to what we were discussing earlier, was that we're honest. And I think I really, really appreciate, not just your leadership in that, but that everybody on the team knows that you do the work, you find the data, you share the data. It's not, there's no, there's no step in between before you present it. So I just feel like that's a very, I think that's something that I have heard people have come to count on, that they're not getting sold a bill of goods. They're, they're, they're going to know what's going on and we know what's going on and addressing it. So I think that's a really, something we can all celebrate.
I have one more for joy too. For chapter one, where the students want learning environments that feel worth weakening up for, where teachers engage, relationships are positive, and the school day feels meaningful and energizing. So based upon that, I'm assuming that we will create these environments for our students that will be joyous for them throughout the day.
So this is our sort of last specific, the last two specific questions, again, taking chapters one through three as a whole. And then after this, we are going to back, go back through the notes we've been collecting all along the way this evening so that we can speak back to you what we heard you say, so that we can make sure to incorporate what it is that you want to see in the next draft. We also have some questions and thoughts from another board member who was not able to be here. And so we've tried to incorporate some of those on those slides as well. So that, that's kind of where we're headed here. So first question for discussion, what specific areas need more clarity or stronger alignment to our core values? And then where do you see disconnects between chapters or gaps in the story?
I feel like the chart pretty well speaks for itself with respect to that first question, especially since we focused on the joy part of it. I think that we, we've covered the core values. As far as disconnects or gaps, I don't have anything that I haven't already said.
There's anything you haven't had a chance to share, any feedback you want to give to yet, as the opportunity?
So going back to where Jane, Jane's very first, or no, I guess it was, it was one of Jane's early comments about why literacy. And I think this for me is kind of a broader question about what is a strategic plan? What is it for? What is a strategy? And so part of the question that I have is, I think why literacy is something we haven't addressed. I think a lot of what we, the questions we're asking are assuming that literacy is where we're gonna focus. And I think it's, it is worth stating explicitly, why literacy? And I think, so to kind of dive in a little bit more to what is a strategy? I think in some ways that is our strategy. That is the thing that we are doing as a district that is different than what other districts normally do, right? And what we have done in the past and saying, this is a strategy we are taking to focus on this. So why literacy and why the focus on literacy? I think are, are things that are gonna be questions, right? But I think I also helped to frame out what comes next. I do think that, so I, part of what I was thinking about was I think that is, in some ways, that is the strategy. And I was having trouble differ, as I read the, the plan, I was having different trouble with the articulation that chapter two was the strategy versus just a plan for implementation. But as we've talked about it and I read a little bit closer, I think that there is something there. It also just could be drawn out a little bit more, which is that we, it is, it is steeped in what our unique community has told us about our unique needs. And that, I think, again, responding to those unique things is a strategy too, right? And I think we, we talked, the, the way that it's presented, the, the kind of community context aspect and the research-based practices, I think, I always, I talk about them a lot together in other contexts, but I think under, like differentiating their relationship a little bit more, that they're not just like these co-equal things that are coming together, that we are applying research-based, evidence-based practices to these particular things that we are addressing. I think can help make that narrative a little bit more clear about how these fit together and why we're doing what we're doing. I think there's also room to be a little bit more explicit about what we're changing. So I think I, I think I maybe struggled a little bit with some language around like why we need to act. Was more, and I'm not suggesting we should change it, but just I think in, in other, other places, maybe we bring this out more. What, when I rephrased it as why we need to change, that was much more impactful and maybe coherent to me is, is in, in the rest of, of what we're talking about. And, and recognizing, I mean, and part of that is recognizing that what we, the thing, it's kind of sprinkled throughout. And I think we've talked about it a little bit in, in some of the explanations of what we're doing, but I don't, didn't see it in the plan itself. But I think that there's, part of that is recognizing some of the things that the way that we have done it in the past has not worked and explicitly calling that out and saying, we are taking a different path here. I think that that's a really important piece of why we're doing what we're doing and that this isn't just business as normal. This isn't just recording the things we were already planning to do this year. It is a, a, a intentional plan to, to have an impact. And I, 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 I see all the reasons why we don't wanna talk about that or acknowledge that or, but I think that, and I see some of our language try to avoid that. So I think addressing it a little bit more head-on, it will help to get our message.
Something that Mr. Tealyn said that kinda popped a thought in my head. Although we're talking about reading literacy in isolation, I think it's also important for people to understand that although it's in isolation, it really isn't. It's connected to all of our other content areas as you need to know how to read in order to be very proficient in all of our other content. That, you know, is foundational skill for, for everything.
And these were questions I came up with when I was looking at this this week. So just bear with me. One of the things I saw in there was about the safety piece. It talked about especially some of our African-American school. And so I was just wondering, is there a way to treat that like a, like a non-negotiable sort of learning condition? Because we know that, I think about my time working at the library, a lot of my kids I worked with there didn't go to school. Scared to walk to school. They were sometimes carrying these, these different things. And so we know that when they do have that type of fear, it does have impact on like attendance, success in academics, mental health and school climate too. So I was just wondering about that. And if you need time to think about that, please, it's in my head. And then also the part around, I'm gonna talk in here about solving staffing gaps without new spending. I imagine people, they wonder about that with everything just going on in the community. So I was just wondering to help community maybe better understand even us like, you know, what, like, are there any like budget trade-offs are being made to deal with like any staffing gaps? Cause we know like people in coverage do cost money. So I think people may have questions around that. Yeah. And then I'm wondering about the stop doing piece of it too, cause I'm thinking about what Shabana said. It's not always easy to just stop doing something. And so, but I still think it's very necessary when I talk about moonshot to other people. That's one of the things that I highlight because I think it's really, really valuable. I guess I'm wondering, this may be like a separate discussion, but like what actual authority like, I don't know if it's the board, we changed it, just make sure programs like truly get stopped when data shows they should be stopped? You know, as opposed to just being like reviewed every single year. Does that make sense? That's it, I think.
Thank you. Amonza.
Thank you. I was thinking similar when it came to maybe helping everybody understand more of the fiscal responsibility. I know it's a point on, I don't know what page it is, but on the investment in our moonshot. But I think even adding another section, really identifying what we're going to do, if we're going to add. I mean, this is a huge goal and to, and it's, it's a big investment. But when we, it almost kind of, it doesn't make sense to me that this is all we're going to do. But financially, we're not going to invest in it. I don't know. That's what I got from the presentation. So maybe just even another slide explaining what the financial investment will be, or if there are going to be additional teachers added or books purchased or partnerships, even the investments that our community partnerships are, are making within the moonshot so that a, any outsider stakeholder can be like, oh, is this going, is this what my taxpayer money is paying for or is going towards? Or I don't know, just a little bit more information on that.
Cause it did talk about philanthropy. So I guess just adding to that, it's like, you know, what parts of like the plan only exist because donors are paying for them? And like, is it stable for the next decade or does it like fall off after like four years?
I wanna again, thank you guys for really, really good work here. This is, I'm, I, this is the kind of work that I, as a board member, really appreciate. And it is, it is supporting the kind of change that we know we want and need. I also just, I, I wanna make a quick comment about my colleagues here. This is one of the best conversations that I think I've had on the board. And I just wanna thank you all for your thoughtfulness in contributing to that.
I was gonna say that before Nick did. I'm kidding.
And if I didn't say it too, like, I also very much appreciate this. It's such good information. And we get it ahead of time, not saying we haven't before, but just appreciate it. Like, I just wanna say that, cause I know sometimes I ask a ton of questions. Sometimes it's so other people can hear it. Sometimes it's just because I just need to know information. But overall, like, I appreciate everyone. I see the work. Thank you very, 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 very much.
Throughout tonight's workshop, we've walked through the plan as one story, Aleah's story. Aleah entered OPS kindergarten in 2025. By 2030, she will be a sixth grader reading on grade level or beyond. In the years after, we look forward to watching her succeed in middle school and high school culminating in her graduation from OPS and her life beyond. Her success depends on the system we are designing together. Strong literacy instruction grounded in evidence and the science of reading. Teachers collaborating in PLCs to adjust instruction. Principals leading improvement cycles and monitoring conditions. Families partnering with schools on clear goals. The district tracking those conditions, implementation and student growth. This is what coherence looks like. Every chapter of the plan working together so Aleah's success doesn't depend on chance. As we conclude the workshop, we'll now review the themes and feedback that you shared during the discussion to ensure your insights are captured accurately as we take our next steps. So all throughout the presentation is you all thoughts. We've been taking notes and updated the feedback. And so in chapter one, which we may now rename why we're changing, we, we collected these sorts of ideas. So how do we present the data so that it shows the breadth and depth system-wide of what we heard? And what performance looks like? It should include level-specific data that drives transformation beyond early literacy, that you appreciated the storytelling, that it would be more influential to include those benefits of literacy, why literacy? How does that help our students, our community and so forth? Why literacy and its impact on other disciplines? That we need to be more explicit about the work we have to do, school by school and classroom by classroom to get to more consistency. And then more detailed breakdown demographic and level to make that case of why literacy. Is there anything that we missed? For chapter two, you highlighted that it was hard to say which was most critical, but that 2.3, 4 and 9 were critical and that they go hand in hand with one another. That knowing where we are, having that baseline and current state is essential. That it was very important that we included empowering families as first teachers, the volunteer network, including how we bring an organized community together around the work. That 2.7 will take us a long way towards sustainability. That we need to highlight and list sections of the plan document in our presentations to be more explicit around how the standards and the theory of action fit together. And to the extent we can make those connections between seniors for effective schools and 2.3 to 2.10. We need to be inclusive of community partnerships, maybe mention for profit in the wider community. And understand that we need to maximize community resources in 2.8. Be more specific about who's responsible for determining what we should stop doing, whose work is it part of? Give context to how we already have some of these tools and we've been working on some of these things. And then we did receive a list of questions and some feedback from another board member that I've tried to capture here. So one thing, if we were to remove the measurement or results pieces from the conditions in the strategy portion, that it would make it more clear that the third chapter is measurement. And then overall provide more context around conditions, which kind of goes with that bullet before. That if we're going to ask, for example, staff to come to professional learning, it better be high quality and relevant, which is work that has been ongoing to improve that system over time. So anything that we missed here?
Actually Suzanne, I'm gonna probably go over, have to go over the next one too. But I'm gonna ask if you would send this list in a list form or have Annie send it to us so that we can all look at it again and go, yeah, that, I, that, well, I really meant this, that, if that would be okay with you. I don't, I know that, you know, the last thing you need is more feedback. That might be sort of helpful if that's possible. Thank you.
You might've said it and I apologize if I missed it, but the piece I was asking about earlier about how the plan, I guess like materially changes like secondary literacy outcome at all?
Yes. So we can add that my thinking was literacy and its relationship to all disciplines across content is where that was living for me and in the conditions and so forth, but we'll make that more explicit for sure. Absolutely. Yep. Of course. No, don't be sorry.
Thank you. This made me think that as a district, we're already doing so much. So we're not starting from zero. We've already have partnerships. We already are, you know, investing an hour for each student, all those things. Maybe including that, I don't even know if in chapter two or somewhere, but also highlighting what we are already doing when it comes to literacy or just highlighting some of the partnerships, what we're doing with families or what students are doing. The professional development that has already been done so that people know that we're, we already are making steps towards.
Right. And then for the measurement piece, chapter three, providing more understanding of how we'll know we're making progress on those foundational conditions. Again, being more explicit about connecting the chapter two to the conditions. And then highlighting the change management piece, providing updates to the board on the process, how folks are feeling about the change and really leveraging those stories as assets to continue to. Yes.
Probably for the one before, but when we talk about our partners and community organizations, do we, how do we prevent like three different like groups from doing the same thing in the same school? Like what safeguards do we have in place to make sure like community orgs are.
So we have, when, when a, there's a process to become a partner and there's a gatekeeper. So there's, that does not happen. We also have empowered principals to make sure that the partners within their building are aligned to their school improvement plans. So if there's a partner within a building that maybe has had a long history in that building, we've allowed them to say, this isn't working. Or if this doesn't allow, no long, no longer applies to things that we need in your building, they can exit in a very polite way. So but the gatekeeper. Okay. Well, I don't, filter. Yep. And, and we do have partners, sorry, that have adjusted their model to fit the things that schools need. And so we've had some great success last couple of years where partners have adjusted their model to, to meet what schools and students need within their. to meet what schools and students need within their building.
Can I make? I'm gonna make a comment. Sorry. Um but then there might be partners that are doing the same thing, maybe just differently, but that's okay too, because we're doubling down on this or, you know, focusing on this as well.
Sure, absolutely. There's, there's a great ne- need and sometimes one partner can't fulfill that need within a building. Absolutely. And there's a history in the Omaha Public Schools going back for a while where partners determined what services the Omaha Public Schools needs, and that's no longer how we're operating.
As we looked at the themes throughout the whole chapters one, two, and three here, the things we just highlighted, um incorporating joy throughout to support change management, the result of our coherence check. And then ditto to everything that was already said earlier. Conversation around, talking again about why literacy, why the focus on literacy, making it clear for all of the stakeholders around why is this a thing that we want to really put our stake in the ground on? Um going back to chapter two, um about the strategy being more clear, more connected and explicit. That came up throughout and again in our coherence conversation. Identifying exactly what it is we're changing, calling out what we have done in the past and why it's, what hasn't worked, why it's not worked and explaining what we're doing. Thinking about how we talk about reading, why are we talking about reading? It seems like it's isolated, but it's not actually in isolation. So how do we make that clear for everyone? Think about how safety could potentially be incorporated as a condition for learning. More on the resource allocation, uh sounds like more specifics around what's actually being spent, going to be spent, where is that coming from? How long do those, will those investments be a part of the picture? And then a little bit more around stop doing the board's role and how do we actually stop?
I think the only thing I, I want to make sure Ms. Amanza's point is, is clear, because I think it's something that I didn't, wasn't intuitive to me, but when she said it, I think was, is, is really potentially important, which is if we say that this is our focus and the thing that we are going to be spending all of our time and focus on for the next and then we say we're not spending any money on it, it does seem like a disconnect. So explaining that in a way that helps, helps resolve that apparent conflict, I think. Is that the point you were making? Okay, I just wanted, great, yeah.
So our next steps are to send you a list of the feedback um that you've given. Um and we'll get those to you, President Erdenberger, as you requested. Um and then we will begin incorporating that feedback into strategic plan draft two. We will present those in small groups um on draft two in February with the ultimate goal of having a final draft to be presented to you in March. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, you guys. OPS proud. Thank you so very much. Um just, uh I think uh we're gonna go into committee of the whole. Say what? You want to say something? Okay. But Superintendent Ray wants to say something.
So um last week, somebody described literacy to me that it's a shield. And I thought that was an interesting way to describe literacy as a shield to all the things going on in the world. And uh it was an interesting way to describe literacy. But quick transition from the shield, Dr. Nero and I last week had an opportunity to go talk to our TSA scholars. So these are the kids that we have at UNO that will become teachers for us. And one of the students asked me specifically if, when I became superintendent, if I could start over in the school district, what would have I done? And it was an interesting question, like if I could start OPS over, what could I, what would have I done? And um it had crossed my mind when I became superintendent, what would have I done over? What could have I started over? And um I think this would have been it. There is some other things I think I would have done differently. There's some other rust I would have scraped off. But getting to a goal of a singular goal where we're focusing on one thing rather than so many other goals, 24 goals, 46 goals, so much other things. And so I answered that student with this, the moonshot, and this is where we're headed. And having one thing that we focus on, this one that connects all other subjects, this strategic plan is how I answered that student. That will be a teacher for us in 27, 28. Um and they'll be ready because of TSA, because of this plan. And they'll help that student from the beginning till graduation. So thank you for your time today. Thank you for the team that has spent so much time on this presentation. Thank you for the team behind me that has also spent time on this. And literacy is the shield. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Ray. Um maybe that kid will end up being superintendent someday. So you never, you never know. Everybody is welcome to say for committee of the whole, but I would recommend against it. Go ahead and go home. Thank you very, very much. In your uh, in your folders, you have the reports from uh the members of the board who attended the Nebraska, the um Nebraska Association of School Boards uh state education conference at the end of November. And one of our expectations when people uh attend conferences is they put together a summary of some of the key points and then have an opportunity to share. Let's make this opportunity to share uh as quick as possible. Shavana, do you want to go first? I, I know you have one thing that I thought was quite interesting about public comments. Let's assume everybody's gonna read the report in great detail. Would you just share one thing? Derry says she's gonna read it in great detail. So uh.
Me today. How about I share about the session that I attended uh with uh KSV Law? They provided different scenarios about open meetings, um violations, if you will. And one of the scenarios that they presented was about a school board, I believe it was outside of St. Louis, who during their script before public comment, they talked about, you know, not utilizing names, very similar to what we do. And there's a public commenter that comes to their meetings very frequently and calls people out by name, specifically board members, and says things that he probably shouldn't say about the board members, um because he doesn't care for, for them. And long story short, the board president sent a letter on behalf of the board to this individual's home and says, you are not allowed to come back to our meetings because you are utilizing, you're using our board members' names in a negative fashion. And then the uh in-house lawyer also did the same. So, and to which I know none of us would do anything like that. And um the individual ended up suing the school board and um individual members from the school board because he stated that his rights were violated as he um the script says you can't use anybody's names, but nobody ever said anything about when they talked positively about the superintendent or a teacher or anything like that. And so just made me think about us and maybe even other school boards and um what that actually might mean for us, if it means anything for us. And so just pretty interesting.
Bottom line, if we let people say nice things, we have to let them say nasty things as well. At least there.
Yeah.
At least during a public comment. I know that. Are you ready to go, Kimra?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. And um I apologize for this super long report, but I can't help it. Input alert or in my top 10, and it's just something that happens. Um I pull out notebooks at the dinner table. But anyway, um I also put these notes together like this because I know we have new board members, and I know how I was, and I love information. And I thought that it would be helpful if I were to point out, I guess, too, that I would prioritize looking at the Department of Education one, I thought was very, very interesting and very informative, even as somebody who's a repeat board member. And the link, um there's so much data at the state level for each of the districts, schools that I thought was really powerful, that um you might enjoy looking through that. And then also, um I would say the one, the summary of the um school finance TOC, and we have Dr. Holman who was there and helped present with that too, which I also found extremely helpful. Um the State Board of Education is also working on their strategic plan, and they are voting on that actually in December, which it might be interesting to look at that. The asking the right questions one, um using data to drive accountability and student success. They thought that one was also very helpful. Um presented, they presented different questions around different um scenarios that um board members could be asking, like um approving a new curriculum, considering a four-day instructional week, um stuff like that. And so I also tried to include in here the notes, but also like um implication for like Omaha Public Schools. So happy to answer any questions anyone may have. And yes, it's long, sorry.
Thank you for your hard work and your attendance. Um I'm just gonna um highlight a couple of things that I thought were interesting. On the second page, there was a hot topics with Karen and Jim. They're two lawyers, school law lawyers. They talked about the dangers of AI, and then he showed a quick clip of Karen kissing somebody generated by AI. And apparently, everybody knew who this other person was, but she had never actually kissed him. But the point was, it sure as heck looked like she was. So the dangers of AI, um specifically, they said that some uh special ed teachers are starting to use AI to help them complete their hundreds of reports that they have to do. And that we have to be sure that we're using a platform that's consistent with FERPA, because otherwise getting that information onto that platform can be difficult. I actually had occasion to, to mention that point with um with Matt, and he said that we are partnering with I think the NDE. Could be wrong. Is that right? Yes, I've got a, I've got a yes. We're partnering with them to come up with how to use a program for how to use AI for our special ed teachers to make those, that report uh preparation a little bit easier. The other thing that they talked about was, as you might know, uh federal tax credits have loomed their head as people make donations to public or private schools. They get to get a tax credit on their federal taxes. And one of the things that um they indicated is that it's very possible that the 501(c)(3) organizations like the Omaha Schools Foundation, if they qualify as a scholarship granting organization, because I was trying to figure out how public schools would get donations, but apparently, um if it is possible that our Omaha Schools Foundation might qualify as the kind of 501(c)(3) or other schools foundations, um that would give people federal tax credits. So keep, we'll keep an eye on that. That's still a moving target, of course. And that was about it. Thank you very much for sticking around. Thank you, everybody, for lots of attention, lots of great ideas. And oh, yeah, let the record reflect that the board workshop adjourned at 8:20.